Downstairs. Welcome, everyone. I did, yeah. Thanks for carrying on business. So I guess we're ready?
We're ready.
Um, so instructions on exiting the building. You can go down the steps in the front through the planning and zoning office, down the elevator, or if you can't do the steps and the elevator's not working, there's the area of refuge at the elevator area. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
The quickest note typo on my part, it still says May 23rd on the top. It is not May 23rd. It is Wednesday.
I changed it, as you might have noticed.
And if you have a few minutes under other business, we'd like to have just a very quick conversation about outreach on the complete plan when you have it. We've got a couple of ideas that want to float by you. We don't have to make any decisions tonight, but we wanted to float that by you, so you can be noodling on that. We run out of time. It's not urgent.
That reason I want to add to the end if we have time. Nope, hearing no objections. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. We currently don't have any audience members in the room. If you're joining us online, we're not monitoring the chat, but you can unmute or turn your video on.
Moment, it's just Sue and I.
Okay, anything, Sue? Okay, we will, hearing none, we will move on to announcements and stat report. Anyone have anything?
I have a couple of quick ones. One very, very exciting one, which is that we extended an offer and it was accepted for an additional community planner with the department who will be starting late next month. His name is Nick Atherton, so we're very, very excited to have an additional person in our planning department doing long-range planning to help do all the things that you and our city council have been very, very interested in pursuing. So really excited. The council authorized this last fall and we were advertising over the spring, so we'll have an additional person on board.
Will you be back to the compliment you had pre-pandemic and pre the 2008, nine financial?
It is a slightly different arrangement. But yes, so this, this is actually a increasing capacity for our planning department. But it is arranged a little bit differently, but yeah.
You need it.
We're very excited to support the great policy work of this community. So that's my, really my big one. I think that's maybe my only one except either on your way out tonight or over the next few weeks, there's a great new art exhibit that just went up today that has done the K through 12 high school program. There's going to be an opening reception Monday, I believe at 5:30. And it's all students work all the way through the school program up in our first floor art gallery here. So really neat combination of, you know, schools and work.
It's, it's really neat. It's actually where I was a little slow getting, because it's a really nice mixed medium too. I think a lot of times that gallery is focused on things on the wall, but there's some kind of sculptural stuff as well. Anything else? Okay, any other announcements? Okay, we're gonna jump right in. So item five, our city plan 2024, the draft future land use types. And from what I gather from the notes, this was on the plan to talk about last meeting, which I had missed and actually pleased to see it on this one, so.
We ran out of gas.
Goodness. Okay, so um, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So the discussion in the packet, in the memo itself, is, is almost identical, except we added a little visual of how we were dividing the land use types a bit. The, the text that you received is all the same as in the previous packet for the, for the pipe descriptions. But we did sort of add a little bit of thinking of residential as having two subtypes and industrial commercial as also having two sort of subtypes. Sort of co-equal with everything else, but considering that there is such a wide range in both residential and in commercial of sort of scale of use and type of use. We thought that that was logical to, to separate those into two different things themselves. There's also a balanced mixed-use area, which is our densest areas for the most part, so primarily city center and Shelburne Road with a couple of other little pockets of where we intend to have both dense housing and commercial to be interacting and providing walkable environments and, and all of that. And that's all things we can get into in the discussion. And the last being what we called principally conservation. This would be most, not all of the city park spaces, city-owned properties, a lot of the UVM agricultural lands, other privately-owned agricultural lands, areas that are currently designed to be very low-density residential, if any, and used for other conservation purposes. It also includes the habitat blocks, the lot of the streams, like the Potash Brook is all in that conservation area and some other landscape scale conservation resources. So that's how we've, we've structured it. And then each narrative description goes more into current uses of those types of lands, a little bit of the history, just to set it up without, you know, overloading with just history. We really want this plan to be forward-looking instead of being an inventory of what we have now. But then also what the future goals for those types of areas would be with the recognition that not everything in the same color category now has the same current status, but the future sort of aspirational goals for those areas would be similar. That also recognizes that some areas need different types of improvement or investment or change or not change to reach those, to reach that state. It's just sort of a forward-looking thing. It's not saying one size fits all over this whole height. It's acknowledging that there, there are different types across the city that are similar enough that we wanted to point out that they are, there are some uniformities across the different areas.
One just quick note to add, which is that this is describing your memo, but one proposal that we have for you all is in the 2016 plan, there's the map, which we'll show in a minute, and then there's a brief discussion, one paragraph under each. And then there's a lengthy discussion geographically based around the city. Our proposal here is to essentially flip the emphasis. We heard from you all, and we heard a lot from all the community outreach, that there are characteristics of either primarily residential neighborhoods or mixed-use areas, wherever they are, whether it's city center or Shelburne Road or business park areas that have a lot in common that the city is striving to that are slightly modified by their geography. So sort of flipping the emphasis to where the majority of the discussion is around the type. And then there is in the geography that you'll get for your next meeting, there is discussion about how the physical area might influence it. So, you know, let's say there's a lot in common in the long-range objectives for, say, the Orchard or Eastwood neighborhood and the Chamberlain neighborhood. A lot of very similar aspects to it. One of them has an airport next to them. The other two don't. You know, there's a lot of aspirational goals that can be very similar between city center and Williston Road and Shelburne Road, but the function of the street itself, Shelburne Road is a state highway that has certain barriers to it that are a little less in our control and is not sort of adjacent to this new city center area. So things like that can be modifiers rather than being the emphasis of it. So we hope that you're as excited as we are about that, but we are looking for your feedback because this is your plan ultimately.
Is, Donna, is the, is the ultimate goal to simplify it? And to simplify the, the land use types?
So there's.
To make it more understandable, less confusing.
So that's definitely part of it. There's part, it's, it's not changing a lot within the level of simplicity from the 16 plan to the 24 plan in the future land use map. The intent is that the future land use map, looking forward as policy, is fairly readable and understandable and is simple for those reasons. And that a lot of detail actually would occur at the, you know, zoning map, official map, regulatory, there's other other places where some more specific detail will come into play, but we, we want the, the, we think that it's most helpful for the future land use map to be a snapshot of the, of a large area. So it's a fairly broad brush of what areas are, are yellow or green or red or orange or.
We call the fuzzy map.
It's, and the 16 plan is a fuzzy map. We've gotten direction from you all that the 24 plan would not be fuzzy. So we've been, we've been working on that, but it's still a fairly broad, a broad brush that's, that's understandable to the layperson instead of having to look up every time. Oh, well, that's a, you know, orange with hash marks. Like, what does that mean? And it's, oh, you know, zoning type number 12, you know, trying to be a little bit more simple than that.
But, but also broadly, the, the objective is for the whole plan to be a lot more streamlined and easier and more accessible. If that's your sort of general question, Donna?
That's the general question. And, you know, and is it, you know, then you have these, these types and then there's, I mean, you use the word overlays a lot, but you know, I don't, I don't understand, like, there's modifiers, you know, it's like, this is the land use type, but this is, this is an, another effect on this particular.
I guess it's more like looking at the level of geography, understanding that there are characteristics of the city that need to be planned for. So understanding that the airport is next to that neighborhood is something that is a consideration in that neighborhood, understanding that the Butler Farms neighborhood is in an area that is much more open space around it, makes it a little bit different. And so the, the planning needs might be a little bit different. It's not, it's not, modifier is probably not a great word. It's more like a statement of how a, a overall objective for a, a type of neighborhood or a type of area might be influenced by geographic surroundings.
And when, when you say.
And then just one of these modify, you know, one of these, not a modifier, but S100 obviously has some impact on this. And I just wondered what that impact actually is.
So I would say that there's actually more impact of S100 on the zoning map than on the future land use map. And I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page that those are different things. The future man, land use map is the forward-looking, you know, these are the general types that we want of, of land uses in the city. Zoning map is more specific implementation of that, those bigger categories. There is some that has been tweaked a bit because of what S100 would, would include because of the location of our sewer lines in the future land use map, but for the most part, things that are included in S100 are actually more at the zoning and zoning map level than in the broad brush land use types level.
Part of the land use regulation, not part of the comp plan.
Right.
And a question on the little table, you know, where we say principally residential and you've got lower and, and higher. Are, aren't those kind of intermingled in a way geographically? How would we show that?
Yeah, so I've been thinking, so first of all, one thing that you, your question has raised is that we are not wed to the labels. That's one of the things we're asking for some feedback on is, is what the labels could be because lower scale, higher scale, lower density, lower intensity. There's a lot of different words that could be used for some of these things. Principally versus primarily versus over, you know, overwhelmingly. I don't know. There's a lot of different words that can be used to describe these areas. To the second, to your actual question, I've been thinking of it as if you're looking at a computer screen and instead of, and your, and your resolution goes worse and it gets bigger, your pixels get larger. So yes, there might be a street that has four single-family homes on it in the middle of an orange area, but the primary sort of over the look of the area is sort of that higher scale or the, or vice versa. You might have generally fairly low density or low intensity or low-scale residential that may have a triplex or something else.
And that is in the 2016 plan. There is that distinction. They don't, they're not called subcategories, but there is a low-intensity and a medium-intensity residential. And in my head, I think of it as the size of the buildings. It's not necessarily about density because density is sort of a quirky thing. But it's, Corey Hill Road behind Staples Plaza has big four-story buildings. That is very different.
Multi-unit buildings.
Right, which is very, it could, which is very different from in some of the neighborhoods I mentioned before. And it's not necessarily about units per acre, which is sort of the, why I've been advocating something other than density, because the density of Corey Hill Road is not any different than, let's say, the Five Sisters neighborhood of Burlington. But the feeling of it is completely different. It's probably fairly similar to Queen City Park neighborhood in terms of the density of units per acre, but the arrangement of it is really, really different. So that's in my head when I think about the orange, the, the sort of orange versus the yellow is the sort of scale of it all, not the density, but the scale.
Yeah, I had to, a few weeks ago, I thought, well, maybe we should use the the zoning designations, you know, that residential is R1, R2, R4, R7, you know, R12. And maybe R1, 2, 1, 4 is what is low intensity and the others are high, but I don't think you can, I, I didn't, couldn't figure out in my mind how to get that onto our map. But we, we did discuss, and I think we pretty much agreed that we would have this, the, the replacement of the fuzzy map. Now, it's a single map, but there would be layers of detail that one can look at because you aren't going to get a lot of detail looking at, at the main map. It'll give you a general idea of what's where, but and it's in my note to you today that we talked about this and thought that, we thought at the time it was a good idea. That that would be a way to to give this map some specificity and, and be more informational.
And I think at the time it wasn't really clear how, how layers might be like structured, like, you know, we thought maybe it might have to be like one static map and then you turn the page and there was another map that had the sewer and water lines and another map that had like more details on the parks and another. So so there are layers, but you could view them by maybe flipping a page or something. So they're kind of.
Yeah. Observe that, like, you've got 51%, 51% could be on one map. That's all observed land in one, in one form or another. And you've got, then you've got residential. But it's a bit more complicated because you've got residential, which is just residential. You've got residential, commercial, industrial mix. And you've got now, I think, residential conservation, conservation PUD is two things. So.
And that's, that's one of the trickier pieces of the mapping, and we'll talk about that in a little bit of how to, what, what your thoughts are on how to depict a conservation PUD because it is residential and it is 70% at least concerned and, and how one represents that in terms of a snapshot, knowing that that 70% on any given parcel might be based on the natural resource. It's, the regulations say basically prioritize all these resources. You go map them and we're not going to dictate it in advance because the important soils might be over here rather than over here. So how we depict that in future land use area, but we'll talk about that.
So what do you think? So, and, and I know everyone has kind of comments through the whole thing. So I guess I'm just not completely sure how you feel like the best feedback would be like if you're jumping into the map feels a little dangerous, but like, you know. So like, were you thinking about kind of talking about each of those categories in a little more detail first and then that's maybe at the end, circling back to like what the category should be called. It feels like maybe.
That's more or less how my brain is structuring it, that if we have these six, these six categories with the descriptions that I, that I drafted with the understanding that there are other maps. This is not the, like, as in the 16 plan, I think there were 12 or 13 maps in the 16 plan. There are other maps that will be available and will be part of the plan. This is just one, but showing on these six categories on one of the maps and then showing other detail on other maps are these six categories and the description of, of them that I have written, what, what your thoughts are on those.
I think other maps wouldn't do it for me. It has to be part of the future land use map, as Jessica suggested, page, page one, which is the new fuzzy map, but it's not fuzzy anymore. Page two could be, could show all the residential areas. They can be differentiated by color as you, page three may show the commercial, commercial, industrial, of which we don't have a lot of. We have a few, but they each cover a large area, but, but they're easy to define. We've got Ag, we've got Ag Educational, which is basically UVM's land. That's easy to show. So I think, I don't want to separate, I don't think we should separate these things that indicate what future land uses might be from the, from the mainland use map. It should be pages or layers other, to give us the detail. And, and, and for somebody who's looking and says, I would like to see where, or where's, where's all the conservation there? And you, we've already got it, actually, if I remember correctly. Paul, you've got a map showing all conservation lands of all types, whether they're parks or.
That exist today, not necessarily, you know, the 70% in a future conservation PUD. We haven't identified where that 70%.
I worked backwards as well. Jessica, I went through all this and then I came back and thought, well, I don't think, I came up with nine, nine categories. Residential, residential, commercial, industrial, next, residential, conservation, commercial, industrial only, conservation only, airport, airport, industrial, agricultural, and agriculture, educational. And I, I don't know, I've probably missed something, but I think pretty much covers the whole city.
Well, maybe.
I have a question about categories.
Yeah.
Since that's what we're. I'll just start by saying a, a lot of what I read in here was really resonant with me and I really enjoyed reading the whole packet. But under these categories, at the bottom of the page, it says the categories themselves are from our perspective appropriate and accurate. And these are the categories, these, we want to limit the number of colors because this is going to be on a map and we don't want it to be too chaotic. I would like to see there be more focus on conservation lands. My perspective, the difference between Quarry Hill and Queen City Park. But in terms of city plan, they're both residential. And we are wanting all our residential areas to be walkable, livable, having communities where people don't need to, or where they have as much as they want where they are. So from a high scale, I sort of see residential, we're looking to do in the future, have all our residences have all the components that many of them are missing now. But we've got conservation lands, we've got agricultural lands, which we've already stated in a previous section, are dwindling very rapidly and needing to be identified and protected as opposed to just conservation lands. And you talked about, you talked about recreation, agricultural, residential. And this map really, the way it's laid out, there's one category conservation, and then there are five categories that have to do with, quote, development. And I'd like to see that emphasis change a little bit. And particularly in light of what we talked about last week about the cover page that we want to have for our city and what we're trying to do. And it would be great to be able to look at a map and go, I see this is conservation land, but I also see this is where our recreation is. This is where our agricultural lands that we really need to preserve are upfront as our, as our sort of big mission. And though there's that difference between low-scale and high-scale residential, the goals for human-scale living in both of those are pretty similar. So I'd love to see the colors change a little bit, or the distribution change a little bit, what are priorities?
So are you speaking about having subcategories of the what's listed as conservation? Is that what you're sort of, is that what you're leading to or is that something different from?
There could be principally conservation. I mean, what I see is one, two, three, four categories. There's, as, as it's laid out now, there's conservation, residential, mixed, and industrial, commercial. Personally, I'd like to see conservation, agriculture broken out separately, more separation on the whether it's in, under one heading of conservation or whether it's individual buckets. I don't care, but I'd like to see more identification in those lands, which are becoming fewer and fewer and are needing to be in our awareness.
So agricultural is a little bit of an interesting one to me because there are the traditional agricultural practices, like the Belter Farm is a, a large dairy farm, primarily like a lot of hayland and things like that. And then there are some, some different, but still pretty traditional farming and happening at Common Roots and at Bread and Butter Farm. But with Vermont being the local regulation of farming being agricultural, being, being limited in Vermont for a lot of good reasons. It would, to me, be a little bit misleading to say like, oh, the agricultural goes right here. Because the flip side of that is that it implies it doesn't go over here. So if someone has an acre of land and decides to start a flower farm or something, they can do that. And it could be somewhere else, like logically, it would only be in the places that are currently considered conservation because they're larger, larger parcels with fewer houses, that sort of thing. Like, that's where it would end up happening. But identifying like right here is agricultural and right here is agricultural, but nothing in between is agricultural is a little bit, a little bit off.
But in the past, where we were talking about agricultural land, we were talking about lands that are, that are designated, that have agricultural soils and identifying them to protect them. So it may not be being used as a flower farm. But it's land that has that potential. And if we put a house on it, it no longer has that potential. And in one of our past discussions, we were talking about the importance of making sure that those agricultural lands don't get lost.
So.
Or other lands which have agricultural potential. That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Would it make sense if, if we, well, first of all, I don't agree with you on the residential. I think we should, we'll separate it. But in the conservation, would it make sense to separate that into lands that are concerned? Known entities, whether they be regulatory or otherwise, and then aspirational conservation lands? I don't know. Because we, we have a certain portion of lands that we know are concerned.
So, yeah.
That, that's a definite.
Yep. There's different scales of definite.
Great.
Unfortunately.
Definitely, maybe.
Yeah, but, but certainly as a supporting map, if we wanted to, for example, show lands that are conserved by a third party, that can absolutely be a supporting map. I yeah, sorry, continue.
No, I was just, I was just thinking of, of, you know, trying, trying to delineate the land that we know is conserved.
Yep. Because the other, the other, the interesting thing about that is there's actually kind of a third category, if you went into sort of. Because the other, the other, the interesting thing about that is there's actually kind of a third category if you went into sort of conserved. We hope to be conserved. There's a third category of lands that would be there may be, and I don't know this to be true, but there may be landowners that intend that own a piece of land that is in the green area that would intend to put a single home on it and have the ability to do that um and to not actually conserve any of their land. That's also possible. Um it sort of becomes de facto conserved. Um so using the word conserved has a bit of a weight to it that I don't think is quite accurate, but I may be splitting hairs um.
I'm 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 just thinking about UVM land, you know, that I I think a lot of people in the city would be surprised to know that that is not conserved land.
True.
I think it would be a surprise.
I I'm absolutely on board and I think Paul is too with a a map that shows the lands that are actually conserved. I don't know if that is, I don't think that's the same thing as a subcategory of a land use type. Um but I'm not sure.
The thing that I'm struggling with a little bit and I I I hear where you're coming from, the thing that I'm struggling with is that um one, if it's land that's not presently concerned, let's say it's privately owned lands, some of the large parcels, if I'm not sure that we've necessarily between types of conservation had that conversation yet. Do we want it to uh successionally grow into forest lands to add to our habitat blocks or do we want to see it actively farmed? It feels like like for us to pick one or the other. I I'm not sure that we've had that conversation and then related to that, I think of a property like the um the Bread and Butter uh recently acquired or actually no, Vermont Land Trust east of the um of Heinsburg Road. It's a mashup of priority areas in their own planning for uh agriculture and for forest regeneration and it's so it's not, it's neither one nor the other, it's both.
Right.
Um and I I'm I'm not sure that we've got the level of knowledge of detail to draw out exactly where we think it should be farm versus regenerative forest.
They can be the, they can be the same or I mean farms often have.
Understood that Lori was describing it as that's that's farmland as opposed to general conservation.
Considered farmland because it provides uh services or value on a farm. I was I mean, I've worked on one, which and it was farm, a five thousand acre farm, but and they grew fruit and they had forestry.
And and maybe that's not the best example, like I'm I'm thinking of something maybe like underwood where there's like recreational pieces, natural areas and maybe some piece that continues to have farming. So like it's it's open and I think we we can generally see it as open and gr- and green, but it it has so many different functions. It might be just hard to. But I'm not opposed to the idea of it and maybe we even like kind of in the text, think about like, is it something we want to try to split out or is it something where maybe there's a like a supporting map that tries to break it out more or.
And I was thinking, I was thinking of in terms of ag lands versus uh habitat blocks. So it wasn't necessarily, is it a, is it, is it a tree, is it going to be forested or is it going to be uh filled? As opposed to these are our habitat corridors and the the connectivity for wildlife, et cetera, versus these are the lands that are the working lands that have been the working lands and can be the working lands. Because those working lands shrink every year rapidly and um.
I'm fine, I mean, I I hear what you're trying to question. Sorry, go ahead, please.
Because I I know nobody had it, so I I struggled with this and I made a list of the 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 lands that might go under what's called conservation, which would be protected wetlands and their buffers. Uh the two, the hundred and five hundred year floodplains, habitat blocks and supporting habitat, habitat connectors, farmland or agricultural land if you like. In our P land, which is the where you would, where I would think we have to split hairs because uh it is kind of conserved because it's the development is very restrictive. It's either one or three. Um so I put it in there, passive recreation parks, Wheeler Hubbard Red Rocks. Those are the only big ones, uh mixed forest, prime ax soils and then uh other grasslands, open grass, grass and shrub lands. Uh that's where, as far as I got, but I think does it cover the things that you have in mind?
That covers every, that that goes down to the. I was thinking about looking at a map and seeing colors and what is it that I want to see stand out to me? I don't want to see fifteen colors on this map. We're trying to keep it limited, but it was just how those colors are.
They would all be one color.
I understand that, but what I was trying to say is, right now we've got one color for conservation and six colors for development. And.
A good thing, that's a good thing though, because that's going to show you that where's it, there's a lot of conserved land. I I don't see that dividing that up and making them different colors is gonna have nearly the impact of keeping it all the same. I vote to keep it all the same. You know, under the same category. And just one thing I've been wanting to say is like, it it's very hard to dictate to a farmer what they can do with their land because they're struggling very, very, very difficult right now. And if somebody needs to build a house on a piece of farmland, I'm going to be the last one to say they can't do it because that could be the survival of the family.
Does it make sense to look at the text and see if it like
Sure.
kind of generally covers a lot of the things that we're kind of hearing people bring up and then because I think we might also like, what you're saying Donna is, but once we see the map, like we might have like a reaction of like wow, it's really great that we have a lot of green or it'd be really nice to have five different kinds of green or you know, we might feel differently having seen it, but maybe trying to get ma- make sure the text is like kind of where we want it, makes sense.
Well, we are pursuing the usual functional approach to zoning, that's right. As opposed to form.
I mean, I guess that's up to you. We were trying, I think in the text, to describe the kind of environments that you're trying to create. So I'm not sure that from our perspective, a form-based code might be exactly the right tool to achieve it. It's really, it's an end goal of of what a neighborhood or what a mixed use area is supposed to function as. The tools implemented, I think we were trying intentionally to be pretty agnostic to it.
Yeah.
Um what made me think of that, uh it was just driving past uh our industrial section off of again on either side of eighty nine.
Can you speak up a bit, Paul?
Mm-hmm, yep, uh and I'll look at the ceiling too, because that's where the microphone is.
Just scream at them.
So um um what is it, I uh what the name of the new company is?
Beta.
Beta. On logic.
On logic.
On logic, yeah, that's on logic, right? Next eighty nine.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember them coming to us and asking us for uh permission essentially to build residential as part of their complex, right? So this is something that's really easy with form-based code. I mean, it's like sure, you can build anything there you want to, it's the function is really irrelevant, right? Um and so I wonder how.
Is it easy?
Yeah, it's.
Is it easy? Yeah, I could think that, you know, as an architect, I would think that that would be a a truly challenging problem because there's so many different ways you could do it. You know, are we doing company houses like they used to in the past, all lined up against the road? Or is it a, is it a community of little clusters? You know, what is it? I mean, form-based code seems, seems like a tricky, tricky thing to define, uh unless you really are designing the neighborhood.
I'd be happy to send you, send you an analysis of on the the uh map that we're trying to produce, the future land use map using form-based code.
I'd love to see it.
Okay.
Very much like to see that.
Did you have anything else or?
No, I did my little form-based code ten minutes here and then and everybody jumps at me and that's the end of that. It's actually, I I gotta tell you something. That's actually the way I think, you know? I mean, I got this thing about twelve years ago in a meeting with Paul Drayer, about a two hour meeting over in City Hall and all of a sudden, you know, the world opened and I saw clearly what, how everything is and the way everything is. And so that's how I think and so I'm stuck thinking that.
And I think like, I I feel like I agree with Paul, like it fits. You know, I think we're trying to describe a feeling with these categories and an experience rather than like a pers- really super prescriptive thing. So and I think
Yeah.
form-based code kind of does that too, to describe like the outline and the.
Even if you think of our, the current for form-based code district, there are different transects, there's the different, you know, T four, T five, three. In a super broad way, this is sort of along the same lines, like you could have a form-based code that is not differentiating between a bank and a restaurant, but it's, there's like more like a higher scale may end up being more commercial or, you know, there's some difference that that you can draw there where the same form-based code transect or type wouldn't apply to Chamberlain as does to city center. Um just because of the visual, it's the the difference in the visual. So I think that's partially what when when Paul was talking about using the word scale, lower scale, higher scale. What we're talking about, uh having different type, different sort of scales of residential, have different visual fields, different scales of commercial to have different commercial fields. Um for example, like something that would be considered more on the more industrial end of commercial doesn't necessarily have to be as walkable. Because there's heavy trucking and other things, so there's some visual, likely the buildings are much larger in some of the more industrial commercial areas instead of what I think of as consumer commercial areas. Um so there's a lot of room for that, but but that, as Paul said, is a, is a tool, is one way to get to it. And I think what we're talking about is the the big picture visual of what our areas should look and feel like. Um not not differentiating between a doctor's office and a and a and a bank or a
Or a restaurant.
Restaurant or a clothing store or whatever.
And well, can I ask my specific question? Because this is, this is like where form-based code totally confuses me. You know, because I see downtown and I see blocks of buildings and it's like, oh, well, this is the form that it has to take, but nobody can tell me where anything goes. What I want to know, and I think is important, if you have housing in an industrial zone, is it on top of the building? Is it on the back of that side of the building? Is it completely separate on a separate lots behind the building, in front of the building? Is it on the side? Where is it? And don't you really need to do a site plan of a specific site to determine where best to put it? As an environmental designer, there it's, you can't have a one size fits all for every site because every site dictates more or less where things need to go. So.
My, so go ahead, Michael.
Donna is absolutely right. Any good architect will lay out.
Well, any good designer, period.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say that because we've got designers and we've got post-Soviet. Yeah, you're a good designer. Uh would would do what what Donna has suggested um.
I mean, it's an environmental design thing, you know, because the site, the climate, everything has you know, has a way of dictating where things have to be.
Piece of land has to be taken into account when you're designing for it.
Yeah, the water flows and.
Yeah.
Anything.
But I think what you're saying isn't, isn't like completely opposed to the idea of form-based code, like I don't think anyone's arguing for or against.
No, I just, I just don't understand how it works at the planning level.
I guess the way I would think of it, for example, out there by logic, logic is that it, the housing would be consistent with the industrial building. I mean, that would be my thought. It would, housing would be invisible.
That's why I had my hand up. They did not ask for housing. They want to build accommodation for trainees and possibly customers.
I'm just saying.
They 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 called it a hotel.
Yeah, I understand.
Kind of had a hard time with that, uh but um.
They want some place for people to come to visit.
Yeah.
For people who are just coming into the, to the organization and have housing and things like.
Also, you're talking about look and feel and you're talking about programming. And.
No, I'm talking about look and feel for sure. Um but programming is part of look and feel. I mean, you could build housing in the university mall right now.
Right.
You know, and there's, you know, there's, it would be not easy, but you could do it. And probably, probably the toughest thing right now is the um is zoning ordinances, you know, wouldn't allow it.
Well, we allow, it's it's uh we're agnostic to use on that property.
In in the, in the mall property.
Across the entire property.
Yes.
In the existing building.
Yes.
It might be challenging to figure out how to meet some of the window door standards, but
Right.
we're agnostic to the use.
Unless it goes up.
So in city center here, for example, with the post-Soviet uh architecture. Uh uh when we, when we brought up a form-based code, our vision for what was the form was the form of towns and villages in New England. Otherwise known as, you know,
Main Street.
Main Street, yeah, or Upstreet, you know. So um you know, that would be, I took some pictures of St. Albans up at the Maple Festival. Bookstore, you know, uh.
A modern version of.
Frame, you know, framing shop, you know, a couple of restaurants and, you know, that's what we always talked about. And I was, I've been surprised at how well apparently we communicated our message at that time. That that's what people's expectation is for city center and they're disappointed that they're not getting what they were promised, you know, they were promised Upstreet, you know, they were promised shop stores, restaurants and, you know, living upstairs from that. So um that's the form we're looking at, we're not the form of, you know, what Shelburne Road or, you know, of uh Dorset Street or something. I mean, we're looking at the form of other, other villages and towns and cities in Vermont and in New England.
But you you never dictated the the footprint of the building. So, you know, so allowing large buildings, that's kind of what happens, you know? It's like, it's it's development in the twenty third, in the twenty twenties.
We were never allowed to dictate anything as far as I was.
So I think we're getting a little.
I I know that form-based code for the whole city has been an idea that's been in the background for a long time. I just don't think it's relevant to what we're trying to do now and we don't have the time for it either.
Right.
But it's a, I'm, I agree with Paul, it's it's a, it's a wonderful way of doing zoning. Uh and uh in the case of land use, I'm sorry to tell you, Paul, but function is relevant.
Well, I think, I think, I think the answer we just got from staff is that we don't need to make a decision now about the type of zoning.
Right.
What we're talking about now is the feel, the types of things, really the land use and and I think what's nice is that the way it's written in the, in our discussion doesn't need to pick right now.
So I think the question that we would like to pose to you and and you don't have to answer it completely in in this meeting, but the text is intended to give a vision for these types of areas. Does that vision um reflect what is in your heads as to what these types of areas will evolve into, whether through regulatory means, investment means, um you know, inspiration to the private sector, all sorts of things, whatever the means are that this is sort of laying out what what we're trying to achieve in those areas.
Can we go through each description? Yeah, because I think, I think some of the points that you made here, I mean, I I understood reading this, where where you were going with it. Um I I wasn't completely sure how it was being utilized, you know, how it, and how it translated into the maps and stuff like that, but 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 I, but I did appreciate, I did appreciate the consolidation to a certain degree and I think maybe if we go one of these at a time and talk about, well, what we agree with and what we don't agree with. Yeah, because I started out and I read this lower intensity pr- or the second one, principally residential, fostering a strong sense of neighborhood. And like right there, it just blew my mind and I'm like, that's the opposite of what I think. I, you know, I think of lower intensity via suburbia with with an almost total lack of neighborhood. With with an almost total lack of neighborhood.
But is that what you want or what it is?
That's what it is.
Right, but this is a future land use map, so that's the question is what are you trying to achieve with those areas?
Well, how do you, how do you get a sense of neighborhood with lower intensity?
So intensity for me was a tough word. Um, I can see having high density with low intensity. And I can see having low density with high intensity. And in fact, if there are lots of fast speeding cars going by and it's not safe to walk, I'm gonna be feeling a much more intense uncomfortable. Feeling than I am in a place where there's. High density, but there are open parks and there are play areas and there are restaurants and there's the vibe feeling, so. I hope that all of our neighborhoods end up being low intensity.
But in terms of certain areas, then should be potentially higher intensity like city center.
Oh, do you?
But I would like my experience in the city center to still be.
You've got a definition issue here.
Maybe the definition issue, but intensity to me is like.
Yeah, and maybe that's why scale, I think maybe that's why in the little color chart. You know, Steph. That's the word scale, lower scale, higher scale, because we don't know what the right word is.
No, I I I struggled with what was the metric? That we could use to differentiate between those, and actually you described it very well, scale, the building. Um, I don't know if you can somehow call that out in the.
I think there's a question of scale of building, and then in my view at least, there's also a. City center is gonna be in hopefully somewhat different from Quarry Hill Road, one, they they are equally four story buildings, but one of them is intended to be an area where. We wanna do lots of programming, we wanna, we wanna have events, we wanna draw people here. Hopefully, we have, you know, restaurants that have music playing until ten o'clock at night. I I hear what you're saying, we don't wanna be overwhelming, but we're trying to create a vibrant place. And vibrancy means different things in different contexts, but city center is hopefully a place where people like, that's the place I wanna be tonight.
Yep.
And that's not necessarily our goal for Quarry Hill Road, we want it to be a. You know, a place where people can relax even in a larger scale setting.
I'm, Laurie's talking about a sense of place. It's the look and feel of.
Yeah.
Or something, not whether it's lower intensity or.
When I think of, when I think of all South Burlington's neighborhoods. I think of. Some neighborhoods in San Francisco, some neighborhoods in in Atlanta, where there are micro neighborhoods that are vibrant. Exciting, interesting places, one may be full of music, one may have restaurants, one may, you know, it's like. There there are places that people want to go.
And they're people. Just up the road, the old north end.
Burlington's Old North End?
Yeah, got everything. Vibrancy, diversity, fun, restaurants, noise.
Maybe. But, um. When I think about all these different areas we have. Ideally, whether people are living in Quarry Hill or living in city center. There are gonna be the qualities of existence that make it a place that people wanna be.
No.
And where they can live and and work and transport without. The, and that's why I have trouble with the word, the intensity of what many of our developed corridors feel like now.
It was our intent to write this, that every place should feel like a great place.
Yeah.
I think what we're trying to do is how do we describe the way in which Queen City Park or. Uh, Country Club Estates is intended to be differently.
Unique.
Differently great than city center and differently great than. An employment center like Tech Park, because they all should be great, but they're clearly not the same thing, so. And we would welcome ideas on either how to describe it or the right words. Whether it's scale, intensity, I don't personally love density, because density is a mathematical metric.
Scale, uh, scale is a, is a good word. I I agree with Duncan on that. My stomach goes tight when we talk about intensity.
That's good feedback.
Intensity, intensity's out, density's out, scale is maybe a working word.
Yeah.
It's it's interesting, because that second one, I mean, I read that and I think of my neighborhood, Village in Dorset Park fits that exactly.
The second one, the.
The the lower intensity prin- principally residential fostering strong sense of neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, areas are primarily residential, number of units and size of buildings. Well, it's not the lowest, but you know, it's like probably six. Six units an acre or something like that. I've, and I would think that that probably in the future is the low end of. Of density, um, because I I can't see much development happening any any less dense than that. Um, you know, so so when I read that, it's like, I don't know if that's what was intended, but I read that and I said, oh, that's my neighborhood.
Do we wanna?
And it has a very good sense of neighborhood too.
And I think that's exactly what we're trying to capture, and not every neighborhood necessarily has, is complete today. And this is trying to set the stage for when we talk with geographies, what's incomplete about them.
Yeah.
You know, some of them have no access to a park whatsoever, they could be a great neighborhood, but they're missing. That gathering point, or they're missing access to get to a store, or they're missing.
Right.
Um, sidewalks, or they're missing something to. Yeah.
They don't have stores where they can get things they need, you know, I mean. A lot of the South Burlington neighborhoods. As they were built, were built around them. And where you live, there's nothing unless you get in here. And. Because all of the land, all the lots are residential. Be able to open up sections that can have little neighborhood parks, have little. Community area where there are restaurants and people can come and gather. You need to have density, population density, for for business to be able to. Be supported in a place like that.
And that's what this paragraph tries to capture on page. Eight of the PDF, where it talks about. These lower intensity neighborhoods vary in location, but share similar transportation challenges, all were developed to be car centric.
Yep.
And then, you know. Right, that's the challenge, and then, and then the next paragraph, it talks about, um. Creating a little bit more flexibility to address the exact things that you're referencing.
Commercial is the paragraph after that.
What's that?
Commercial use and how density is required to support commercial use is.
I know, but I I kept coming up with things, then I read it, go, yeah, I got it.
Yes.
That's good, but. How do, how do we, in these neighborhoods like Laurel Hill neighborhood? There's no place that a, that a community square and a little restaurant and a bank and a. There's no place for that to happen. And is there a way through through zoning or through planning over time? To create the opportunity for those spaces to emerge?
So I think this is the first step in the overtime that you're talking about, that that. Putting it on paper, that that is the goal of those neighborhoods, uh, purposefully, none of these areas say residential only, no commercial. That's how things were in the past, and that's how a lot of areas were built, um, but this is presenting a vision of. Lower scale residential as being dense enough to to support a corner store or something like that.
Right.
Um, and. So this is how you set up. Those forward looking incentive programs or working with partnerships with private developers or. Um, reaching out to landowners who, you know, may want to. Do something on the back half of their lot, or you know, there's a lot of options that are both. Program and incentivization and um non regulatory, and there's zoning regulations that over time. Because non conformities and zoning have to go away over time, will. Will sort of push things in that direction, but setting a vision that you're happy with in the plan is how you set up all of those.
And then, and then that specific instance, I would say that the other component is to go into the next category to look at the mixed use places. Because for Laurel Hill. Creating a. The biggest problem in terms of getting to a store for Laurel Hill to, in my perspective, is that Shelburne Road was or was built. For the person who's driving up from Charlotte with no uh attention whatsoever to the neighborhoods immediately behind it. So as those properties redevelop, how do they orient themselves so that they are equally comfortable or maybe even more comfortable for somebody on foot? To get to that Shelburne Road and not feel like they're walking into a place where they have to. You know, walk through a, you know, Kmart parking lot to get to.
Walking through the miracle aisle.
Send next.
And so I, yeah.
Um, yeah, it's just, where's Laurel Hill, just to be clear?
Of children.
Of Shelburne Road.
Is that next to Orchard? Is that right next to Orchard?
Yeah.
It's close to Orchard, yeah.
It's a back into the side.
In back.
You know where the Bagel Baker is.
Yeah, sometimes when you mention a neighborhood and we're like, oh, where is that?
Which neighborhood is that, yeah?
Yeah, I, I know Laurel Hill Avenue, so that's a big long street that kind of wraps around in back of Orchard, right?
Yeah, it's all residential. It's just, it's.
The Orchard and that are kind of similar.
Yeah.
A layperson would call it the same place, but I learned very quickly in my time here that they are identified. Locally as being two different places.
Really?
Yes.
But that whole, that whole area.
Lost equally to both of them.
That whole area east of Shelburne Road, all those neighborhoods in there. They're just places to sleep. The way they're set up now, or to quote, live in your, in your home, but they're not.
They have good park access, but they don't have good, because they've got, I think, Samansky.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And they've got good access to school, and, I mean.
So they're not missing everything.
No, a lot of the.
What you're saying is it's captured.
It's captured and just. It strikes me that a lot of what we've got in here. Is applicable to any one of these neighborhoods we're talking about. Whether it's quarry hills. High rise buildings or it's.
Yep.
Orchard, so.
There's a lot of similarities in the text between the low scale and the higher scale residential, there's a lot of similar goals, there's a lot of. Um, improving bike ped transportation, there's a lot of things that are similar, um, I guess the general. Difference between the two descriptions is that. There are, there is a bit of a different history, because a lot of the lower density areas are either. Older or are actually on larger lots, so it's sort of, there's two different parts of that, um, and the. Higher density have been developed along. Some of the arterials in a slightly different way, so like Kennedy Drive and the um multifamily along there. But the goals of connectivity and neighborhood, um. You know, social capital and and knowing your neighbors and all of these things that. And having small scale commercial that you can walk to, like a lot of it is is very similar, it's, there are some overarching goals to to the residential areas. Um, it's just. A little bit of a different application because of some different history and because of different goals that result from the different history.
Right, well, and one typically in the lower to medium often have some kind of a yard, whereas the medium intensity areas often don't have a yard, so that. Makes for a, how you, how you create relief and relaxation becomes a different thing.
Yeah.
The goals can be the same, but the means have to be different.
Mm-hmm, so Fran had his hand up for a while.
Yeah, uh, so I think what what's happening is. We're trying to think about existing neighborhoods. And describe them without saying you have to bulldoze the whole thing and start over. To get the result that we're talking about, and it's hard to kind of dance around that. How do you project onto an existing area? From what it is now towards what.
What it could be.
What it could become, and so I guess the overall language that we're looking for is really. Um, when somebody comes to present a proposal. Uh, to the DRB, then it fits within the umbrella of a description. For that general area. In other words.
It moves it in the direction.
Yeah, so somebody's gonna come and say, well, I've got a single family house here and I wanna make four units. As a fellow did a while back, and so then, does it fit within this, we're trying to put the umbrella over. That area to say, well, if you did something like this, what is our concept? And then gradually over twenty years, maybe the whole. Area will have different properties.
Yep.
And and go that way, so it's, so it's hard to, I guess, the the difficulty in describing it that I hear between Laurie and. And you know, Michael and and Paul, and is. How how do we envision an area in the future that's already built? I mean, we can easily envision an area that's open land.
Right.
Uh, it's really hard to envision the area that's already built.
Well, from a regulatory perspective, I think the hope would be that the language in here. Gives you and your future view versions of yourselves, the direction for when you go to scrub the regulations and say, is. Um, are we enabling the right things and restricting the right things, it gives. A foundation to that discussion, so you might wanna say, well, we were very comfortable with seeing backyard. Um, accessory units, let's make sure the scale is in keeping with what's around it, or. We wanna make sure that there's the ability for a store to be in there, but not a. Walgreens type size of store, we wanna, so this gives the the framework. To that future discussion about let's set up the rules to incentivize that change that you want. Um, yeah.
And mind you, in that same kind of thing, this is going into planning or a different level of planning, but. If you wanna turn this into a fourplex, there needs to be some money set aside that's gonna enable us to. Take some of this land and turn it into park space in the future.
I think that that's what we're trying to, in this text, not only use regulations as as the, as the tool, so it talks a little bit in there about how. Um, some of these neighborhoods are getting on to almost a hundred years old and that they are ready for reinvestment. Um, having an objective of, um, which is in the recreation chapter of a park within. Quarter mile of all neighborhoods or all homes. You know, I I, the next major project in the next, or one of the next major projects for the city to do is a parks master plan, it may identify some neighborhoods that are. Substantially underserved.
Yep.
And the hard question for that plan is, how do we solve that to achieve the neighborhood that is laid out here?
Right.
Uh, you don't have to answer all those questions here, but setting the direction.
That's where we're headed, yeah.
So I'm more concerned about. Um, the negative impact on neighborhoods, uh, from what we do here. Than anything else really, because I mean, you mentioned bulldozing the neighborhood. It's already been done, you know, I mean, that's the issue with the Chamber of Neighborhood in here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it can be that bad. Um, I think our neighborhood has done a good job, I had a guy who. Uh, was a builder living in the neighborhood. And he remodeled or even, you know, script and rebuilt. Any number of houses in the neighborhood, you know, that's really. You know, raised the level of homes in the neighborhood, and we had the Liberty Motor Inn, and now we've got the executive offices for. The medical center, you know, so I mean, there's been that kind of change in our neighborhood that's been completely positive. Uh, you know, East Woods, it's a. Uh, the Rice neighborhood, yeah.
That's Bob Paisley.
Hmm?
Bob Paisley.
Bob Paisley, yeah.
So we've talked through um kind of the residential descriptions pretty much, do there are any other general comments on those?
Yeah, I I was just thinking about what you were talking about, Laurie, and and the overarching themes that we're trying to get to. Walkability. Uh, transportation that's not dependent on our, um, I think those are overarching themes, and I thi- I I think you guys did a good job of calling that out. And also calling out, you know, in the neighborhoods where that's not the case, how do we get that to that level? You know, and I get my 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 question, is that is that something regulatory down the road, I don't know, you just said, kind of avoid regulatory.
I'm not avoiding just or or being being inclusive of the of other tools also. Um, I think that. To be frank, there's a lot of work to be done in some of those, eh, to to meet some of these objectives, um, and it's gonna take. A lot of pieces of the puzzle, you know, we've heard, you've all discussed how. The Shelburne Road corridor, we're moving into the mixed use areas, but the Shelburne Road corridor is pretty underserved by park space now. Not surprisingly, because it was all built up as car dealerships, you didn't need cars for car dealerships. Um, but thinking creatively of how do we start to insert them to create quality of life, um, is. It's gonna take a lot of creative thinking and.
Kind of the old hamburger gloves, there's a whole section of of undeveloped land that could turn out something really nice.
But it's fascinating to think about aging that children. So it's not just looking at Shelburne Road.
Yeah.
You know, like, that's. You know, that, that's.
Well, I guess, so. So speaking of that, so I, it sounds like maybe we got through descriptions of residential areas. Any thoughts on the. Mixed-use commercial categories? Before we move on to. Conservation and then the mapping, I guess where we're headed.
The big thing that we wanted to highlight in the commercial area, um, is, um. You have started a discussion about integrating some form of. Um, places where people sleep. I'm gonna try to avoid the word housing or residential. Places where people sleep overnight as a component in some areas. So that's an introduced subject in here. And when we talk about the map in a few minutes, we're gonna show some areas that we would propose be candidates. For that kind of integration. And previously, you've all talked about integration of more services into those areas as well, so that people don't. Have to, you know, get in their car at lunch to go halfway across town to get a sandwich. And we started to see some of that, like the. Red Barn being built, um, Kestrel Coffee is inside the, uh, the, the, um. The big building.
On community draft?
Yeah.
True.
Building that has got, uh, um, vineyards in it, the big giant. Yeah, intact park.
Bill did, that's what.
Yeah, the other place has gone fast, I think. On the corner of Tilly Drive.
No, my wife was there yesterday.
And a sandwich here last week.
The other day it looked like it was.
They're not open on the weekends. I don't know why, but they don't open on the weekends.
That's good news.
That's true of almost every.
Well, that gets, that gets the whole issue of to be able to have these mixed-use commercial spaces, you've gotta have the density. To make it work, I mean.
Yep.
You go to a lot of those areas and you walk into these. Corner stores that are just amazing what they're. What they're offering, but they can't survive here because there's not the population. To drive it.
Brian Farms.
For a long while.
Was that?
Oh, Brian.
For a long while, people couldn't get lunch right at, uh, Technology Park.
Yeah, right.
Would you, we discussed this before. Or after we discussed, well, I went around to Technology Park and. Um, Meadowlands and, and there's actually a lot of space where. There could be place workforce sleeping quarters. Now, let's, let's not be, I mean.
The, the key thing is, is that something that you want to begin to explore in this plan?
I, I'm thinking.
Thinking is what you're asking for, so that's what we're.
Mixed, mixed use is terrific and close to work.
This, the plan also talks about that there are likely some areas that you want to make sure are. Reserved for the uses that really can't be next to where people sleep. Not very many, not very many, not very many in twenty twenty-three, but it's not zero.
Creative Torium and Meadowlands.
You can't have, uh, people living next to the FedEx place.
Right, essentially having truck users, even the crematorium, there's another right near housing that probably nobody knows about in the city.
Oh, probably.
So. And we've never once received a complaint about it.
That's good, so don't, don't tell anybody.
About it.
Any other big major comments on the commercial area?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, the, this last comment about, you know, how do you slip sleeping quarters into there? And I'm thinking. You know, why do we have to insist that houses look like houses? Why do we have to insist that all the time?
We don't.
Well, I know, but.
We're not saying we have to.
Well, I think there's sometimes built-in assumptions. I think that here that these types, the principally non-residential. Is one place where you could really get away from that. Oh, this is residential. Um, you know, because there's, there's forms of housing that can be built a lot more cheaply. They just don't look like. Well, I take that back. They're building them around here and they're calling them senior housing. And they're a little sad-looking sometimes, but with a little bit higher tech. No, no, that one's very nice. The ones over in Blair Park specifically. You know, I, I think that, that one, that one's pretty sad-looking.
Next town I'll work.
I know, I know, through this, but, you know, but, I mean, I think there seems to be a sense that. Houses have to be like siding with white trim. And, you know, it's like some of these places would just be a lot more successful if they just looked as high-tech. You know, and we keep trying, stop trying to put, you know.
I mean.
Siding and white trim on everything.
That being a discussion in this area of, you know, the character of housing that, or, or. Sleeping quarters doesn't have to be. A traditional model of what housing looks like. I mean, I think that that's exactly the kind of characteristic that you can talk about in here.
It'd look like a warehouse, it could be loft space. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff that is really.
Yeah, because we don't have creative housing.
There's a house next door to the Easterns. To the Easterns who are here. There's a house next door to them which has got corrugated steel siding and it looks absolutely fantastic.
One in Burlington?
Oh, Burlington.
There's one near Domino's.
And, uh, my best buddy, uh, in California, his, his house sided with Corrigan. Uh, it looks terrific.
Yeah, and I think in the commercial districts, particularly, even if it's. You know, I, I think there's a lot of opportunity to not restrict the materials quite so heavily.
Do we?
Uh, I think yes, and certainly in Form 800, we do.
In some areas. City Center.
Have not rest.
City Center.
In the new areas.
So, so the, the latest version of the regulations includes a little bit of language that says that the. Materials and design should complement their surroundings. It's, it's a little more directive than that, but it, it does, I think, start to get to that, that if you were building housing near Beta, it might not look like housing somewhere else. So it's, and, and it, it was used by the DRB to encourage a little bit more. Brick with some of the buildings in the tech, in some of the tech park area, because brick is kind of a theme in there. So they worked with on logic to. Sort of modify the design a little bit to, to be complimentary to what's around it in that instance.
You know, it's where we fell apart in Queen City Park. With some of the recent buildings again, but. One technical issue under the mixed-use and commercial areas on page eleven. The third paragraph says, "Traditional zoning design, uh, designed cities where residential use and commercial were." Completely separated. I think that needs to say late twentieth century. Because traditionally.
There was no zoning.
Okay.
That's, that's what that is, is, is when zoning, zoning was not Eu- Euclidean zoning if one.
Okay.
Specific about it, what, the very earliest was the nineteen twenties in Ohio. I think, um, and adopted much later, in the, in the following decades after that, so. It's not traditional form or traditional development or traditional building patterns, it's.
Maybe say twentieth century.
Something like that, because a lot of city centers just weren't built that way and that's why they're so freaking dynamic.
Right, yeah.
It's just a good point.
Yeah.
Really clear about.
It was a massive overcorrection in the twentieth century where the idea was, let's get away from the rendering plants, which was a logical. Right?
Get away from the rendering, the sweatshops, but, but. So many of the, of the urban areas have this, that's why they're so dynamic.
Yeah, and I'd say, you know, just to add to that, one of the challenges of South Burlington is we don't have any of the bones of what existed before that.
Exactly.
You know, o- other than maybe Queen City Park, you know, most of what was built was only in that era, so that.
It was built as suburban.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And how do you transform?
Distinguishing feature of Vermont, of South Burlington from most of Vermont.
Right.
Yeah.
Not, not, yeah.
Well, I.
And it's one of the.
That announcement, it was made of the, um, at, at the state level, that they have consultants that are gonna help. Towns figure out how to put infill housing in existing town centers. And I forget who I said it to, but it's like, oh gosh, South Burlington almost has to do its own because. We're like the, one of the few places that doesn't have any existing cute little downtown.
Right.
You know, like most towns do, but we have mid-century modern. Which is what we have, and it's like, okay, so what does form, how, how do you infill? Is to me, the, the whole infill question becomes really important, you know, because. The, the mid-century houses are the ones that get torn down, because they're just so poorly built, most of them. Um, and it's just hard, it's hard to take those bones and improve on them, so most of the time people just flatten them, because it's pretty easy to do.
Even though mid-century is coveted by the younger cohort nowadays.
Well, they are, but they don't wanna drafty, you know, uh, two-by-four wall with, you know, shoddy plywood siding on the outside here. That's what a lot of are. There's some really well-built ones.
Transformed a few of them.
There's some pretty well-built ones, but, uh, most of them aren't.
Is, this is a good transition point to talk about the map?
Yeah, I was thinking.
The secret map.
Okay, not so secret, just.
It's just we're slow to get to it.
It's been a secret, they're gonna be a drumroll, it's gonna be a big surprise.
The first one you're gonna see is the one that you already know, so I'm gonna start with. Start with that, give me one second here to check.
I actually like the professional tour of the maps. I think that, I think that some of us are more adept at interpreting maps on our own, so. I wouldn't agree with what Michael said about it being secret. I think that we're presented something.
Okay.
On equal footing here.
I'm, I'm only teasing, because it wasn't in the package, so we couldn't look at it.
I know.
Okay, so I'm gonna sort of show it north half, south half, because otherwise the vertical orientation of our city doesn't find itself very well.
Since what you referred to, it was something now.
Yeah, no, one next to it. No, 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 no. Same thing, which was just on, I was just trying to hit the. So.
Hey, got it?
Um, sure, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. So this is the current future land use map. Uh, this is the twenty sixteen map. Um, you'll see that it has the same basic colors. Uh, blue is non-residential, uh, yellow is low intensity, that was the word used then. Mostly residential, uh, orange was medium intensity, um, mostly residential. Green is principally conservation and red was the mixed-use areas. You'll also see that there were a couple of areas that were shown white. Um, and that was specifically, um, adjacent to the airport, which we've talked about before. Map was intentionally fuzzy, and when we went to look at the non-fuzzy version, uh, you'll see that there are some areas that really don't reflect reality. Um, because we were trying to emphasize certain things. So for example, in order to show. The potash brook through here, um, we had to muck with the colors a little bit so that it looks like. Um, most of the former Kmart Plaza is actually green when you take out the fuzziness, because if you showed it as red, the green didn't show up at all. So there's some implications of having done that. So that's the current fuzzy map. I'm now gonna ta- show a non-fuzzy version of that same. Map, and then we're gonna talk about the, um, our concept for the future work.
And I like that idea, because I don't, I know somebody said we're, we decided against fuzzy, but I think that we need to think about whether or not that makes sense or not. Because having a line on the ground might be less comfortable than having fuzz, so. I think that's still just something we need to think about.
So this is the exact same map that you just saw, um, but non-fuzzy version. So this is the data behind it before we played with it a little bit. So you'll see, this was the example that I was talking about here, so in order to show the green. Um, this was done intentionally because the way that the software blurs it, if you want the green to show up at all, you had to create. The thing I didn't mention about the fuzzy map before is that, you know, that there's pros and cons to being fuzzy. There's specificity. Of, um, of, of a map is stronger when you're not fuzzy, but then it does not. Which the pro of that is that something can't be changed in a way that you don't want it to in the future. The flip side of that is that you also have less flexibility to change it in a way that you do want it. So for example, the city adopted habitat blocks in the last few years. I'm not sure that without the fuzziness that would have been able to be done in the same way, because if you just draw on the hard lines. You added habitat blocks in areas that didn't show that, so.
Are you able to change the, um. Intensity of the fuzzing so that it, it's just a narrower fuzzy line, so you get.
Absolutely.
Somewhere between this and that total fuzz.
Photoshop is a fantastic tool and can go from zero to a hundred on the Gaussian blur.
The Gaussian, okay.
Um, so this is just a little tour, again, same thing, um, and I'm gonna switch now to. Um, our, uh, what we're looking at in the twenty twenty-four one. Oops. There we go. So a lot looks similar and I'll do some toggling back and forth, but I wanted to talk about it before you, um, before we go into the details. Um, first thing we did was we added in the green areas, the principally conservation, the, um. Either the updates of area that is land that's been conserved, like the Ockler area. Or areas where you modify the natural resource protection district, like right here. Um, or anywhere that you put habitat blocks or habitat connectors. So anywhere where you've done that, we. Um, added that to the green. That was the first thing that we did. We took some steps to, um, uh, in addition where you've expanded. Um, or made more clear your intention around stream buffers, especially the potash brook. We tried to show that more clearly. Um, that it is not just sort of a stream in the middle of a industrial park, but it is. A, a, um, feature in and of itself. Um, the purple is the new color, and this is the area that we are. Um, having you consider as, um, areas that could be candidates for, um, overnight accommodations associated with business. Um, and or residential. So the idea is, this is tech park over here, this is, um, Tilly Drive down here. This is, um, the area that has recently been approved for commercial lots in O'Brien, but has not been built yet. And then south of the interstate, this is a little bit on both sides of Heinsburg Road. And then the area that is, um, Meadowland Business Park essentially up to the stream. We looked at the other blue areas and we've started to feel much less comfortable about the other blue areas being mixed-use areas. So we're talking about the, um, industrial park that is behind the airport, that is mostly like auto body shops and. The Sheriff's Department or Barrard Drive, which is very similar up here, or, uh, Loweston Road. Uh, east of the airport is all in the sixty-five decibel zone for the F thirty-fives. Um, that didn't seem like that is a great candidate for overnight accommodations. Um. And then, uh, the last thing that we did, um, no, two more things.
Can you define what you mean by overnight accommodation?
I'm finding, you, you said, um, we talked about residential earlier, so it means including some level of residential, but you can define. Later what that means, is it housing in and of itself, is it places that is associated like on logic? The idea being that these could be more mixed-use areas.
Is a hotel.
Yeah, because a hotel seems compatible with the airport.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, I, I mean, lo- longer-term states. Um.
What, what's wrong? I mean, I know housing is, has gotten a happy word these days, but it's really what it is.
In the text, it's called residential. It's nice conversation, you were splitting hairs, so I was trying to use a different word.
It says with residential in the key.
Yeah, so, yes, with residential is what I, is what we need to say. Um, the idea being that it is, the reason it's purple and not, um, either orange or yellow is that. It would still principally be an area where employment is the objective, that the housing is there to complement. The employment.
We would call workforce housing.
I, I mean, if, if, if we were completely agnostic to the uses, these areas would become completely residential. Based on where the market conditions are. I'm not sure that's your objective, to have them totally become residential. Because the market today, everything else being equal, is gonna build housing somewhere.
Yes.
So this, the purple is trying to say, you know, my, we don't know what the tools might be, but the tools might be, you know, a, a given lot can be. Up to forty-nine percent residential, but not. A hundred percent.
Wouldn't the objective be that to provide residences for the. For the people who are working in that place, like Meadowlands.
I, I think Paul's point was, we don't have to decide right this exact second, because. I think, I think Paul's point was, we don't have to decide right this exact second, because we haven't had a big policy discussion about it, but we could identify. More generically, that it's something for analysis, like.
But overnight accommodation doesn't sound right to me.
Well, residential is the word I use in the text.
That's fine. One thing that South Burlington really doesn't have much of that Burlington has in its south end. Is studio maker. Uh, creative. Uh, spaces where you can have live-work artisans, past people. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, and. A lot of that gets lost when residential development happens. Because it makes more money. And this area with residential could. Create some of that in South Burlington. It could be a really dynamic. Uh, business cultivator for. Incubator. Yeah. Like the building down on Lakeside. I liked the building on Lakeside, but I was also thinking about like the Howard Space on Pine Street or. There are a lot of, of.
Oh, when we were evaluating the airport. Uh, it really started to look like a technology park. You know, it, it, there's a lot of development. What do you think about the idea of? Uh, purple instead of blue?
You mean at along Williston Road?
No, for the airport.
Well, I think that the key is the purple would include the housing, and I think realistically, you know. Most of what you're seeing up here is the air, is the inside the fence airport. Which is. Well, it's not that it's not, it's, it's also not gonna be. It doesn't mean that hotels, and I should have been more clear, because I, I really didn't mean this to imply hotels. Hotels can be in a commercial area. This is really more longer-term housing for folks.
There's all kinds of stuff there. I mean FedEx is there. You know, I think Burlington is there. There's all kinds of stuff.
And that's, and that's the idea of the purple here, and we're, you know, we're completely open to adjusting the boundaries. I drew this northern boundary essentially to be where the sixty-five decibel line is. Um, because it didn't feel. Appropriate to encourage housing to be in an area that currently is discouraged from being housing at the. From, from the federal guidelines, and then. This area is blue because that's essentially FedEx and their way in and out. And giving a little bit of space for things like that to exist. So I, this line follows the eastern. Um, Community Drive. Line there, um.
And a small part, a small, one reason that this, the back half of Meadowlands, if you're going south of the interstate is. Blue is, is partially because for the reservation of spaces for these large commercial and industrial uses that. Generate more noise or, or, or dust or whatever, more trucking, um. It's crock, the proximity to the quarry, the existing quarry that won't last forever, but does currently exist is back on that side. Yes, it's an operational quarry. It's only accessed through Williston, so we, the road only goes east. Um, so that's not a. Connection to Heinsberg Road. Um, but also when we've been talking about all these other residential areas or mixed-used areas and wanting them to be. Connected and walkable things, that, that blue section is fairly disjointed, and it would, it would be a big lift. To put residential uses in that area and, and follow through with some of our.
And they're further away from housing too. Um, one area, uh, that I'm, I think that when we, if we decide to do a little bit more precise map. Um, there's actually a very substantial green belt that is part of the permit for this industrial area that I would probably show as green to show that there is a transition from the neighborhood there. But, you know, that's. So the last thing that I wanted to talk about briefly, well, two, two last things. Um, this is an updated area for, um. Just so the interstate along Heinsberg Road. Um, this is an attempt to reflect your recent zoning in that area. And the habitat blocks. And also, um, the possibility that you might allow for a little bit more commercial activity. Right immediately in the first couple hundred feet along, um. Heinsberg Road. Uh, yes, so the Heinsberg Road is right here.
So that's the hill farm, right?
Yeah. We did a little bit of adjustment, um, on the color scale, um. This area here in the southeast quadrant currently, I'm gonna do a little bit of flipping back and forth now. Currently shows a red in the middle where the Mill Market and Deli is, and then orange around it. Um. We've been pretty uncomfortable over the last few years with the, with the red being a color there, because the red elsewhere in the city. Means, you know, city center. Um, given the updates in the zoning, given the overall intensity, we felt that a better reflection might be to show that is orange. And then something closer to yellow around it with the idea that yellow, as Donna you were describing, doesn't necessarily have to mean two or forty units acre. It means. Lower scale mostly residential. Which is, I think, the intention of the traditional neighborhood development is the intention of the. Um, conservation P D Ds. So that's an update. That we're proposing similarly, um, along Old Farm Road. It's compact. Single-two-three-family homes that's been approved there. But we felt that it's a more, it's more appropriate to call that yellow than orange, because it is. The scale of single-two-three-family homes, not fifty units for the most part. And the place where it is larger scale is the orange along Kennedy Drive. So we're trying to sort of have the scale. Match the intent there. And then the last thing that I wanna talk about is, um, the area near the airport.
The Heinsberg.
Oh, yes.
Kennedy Drive. There's a, at the intersection of Kennedy Drive and Heinsberg Road, there is already a node of some commercial areas and commercial buildings in that area, so. We've added it as a red.
Where the gas station is.
The gas station and.
Yeah.
There's some realtors, realtors' offices and doctors' offices and things like that. Um, showing that as another sort of commercial balanced mixed-use node, um, in that area.
So then.
Are these layers available to us?
We will make them available to you, yes. I do, I wanted to talk about them first, but then, yes, we will make them fully available to you. We got the.
But on, on the, on the viewer, so we can turn them on and off and.
We will do exactly that. With the caveat that, you know, this is a first draft.
Yep.
Um, so the last thing that we wanna talk with you about.
Out of the blue by the public DPW and Barrett Street Service.
Yes, um, DPW Barrett Street Service calling that a little non-residential node, which is really what it is. Uh, with the dump is.
Principally non-res, principally commercial.
Okay.
Is that Patcher Road?
It's all in Patcher Road, yeah.
Yep, okay. So the last thing I wanna talk about is the area immediately adjacent to the airport. Um, we have, um, spent a lot of time thinking about how do we best? Portray what the city's. Uh, direction and feedback to the airport has been over the last several years. Including the work of the task force last year. As you know, in twenty sixteen, it was just shown as a big white area, and it just said. Uh, because the Chamberlain Study was just being done at that time. We don't know what, we don't, we don't wanna be in advance of the Chamberlain Study, so it's left white. This line here between the white and the yellow is essentially, this is the sixty-five decibel line, the old one. Where the homes were acquired to the upper right of that. And, uh, the blue is the airport fence. So essentially where the homes were removed is what the white is.
Eleven acres roughly, right?
No, forty-one.
Forty, yeah.
Quick question, is that land that's owned by the city of Burlington or is owned by?
Um, so now where we are is that the bulk of the land is now owned by the city of Burlington, having. Purchased it as home from homes. There are a handful of remaining homes that chose not to sell because it was a voluntary program. The second largest landowner is the city of South Burlington. We own one parcel right up here, and then we own all the streets. Which is, you know, the streets are land, right? So.
This is gonna be easy.
No problem.
That's why it's white.
If they own everything else, can you give them the street?
No, that's a kind of bargaining.
Yeah. So.
Is the hotel, it's.
The hotel is on the blue. So all of this area that is white is still currently zoned residential for. Yes, um, so it's, it's all zoned as residential. Because that's what it was. So there were a couple of major pieces of feedback that the city gave. Um, over the last several years. The first in twenty sixteen, the airport was doing what's called a reuse plan. A reuse plan is like. Um, what do you do with the land that you've acquired? Um, it's got a very specific federal purpose, which is. Do you, does the airport still need it? Does the airport not need it? The answer is almost always the airport still needs it, but that's the federal purpose behind it. But, um. Included in there was. A shared idea of the city and the airport of relocating. The, um. Transportation route that goes through this area, this neighborhood. So right now, the major net, the major road is, um, Airport Parkway. And then, um, you go, and then White Street. And then Airport Drive. A whole bunch of the traffic that goes through there has nothing to do with the airport. It is folks going from Route fifteen in Colchester down to Tech Park and Williston. Cutting over the interstate, et cetera. So a shared idea at the time and even predates that was. Wouldn't it be nice to get traffic out of that neighborhood, which is really, you know, a neighborhood street? And essentially. Um, at the corner more or less of, um. Of, uh, Airport Parkway and Kirby Road. Relocate a roadway that eventually matches up to where the, um. Where the terminal is and leave the neighborhood streets to be neighborhood streets. Let those fifty or sixty homes that are there. Um, you know, re. Recreate as a neighborhood instead of being. So that was a shared goal. Um, what was shown in the twenty sixteen airport plan was a relocated road that was fairly close to this yellow. Zone. And the city said. Uh, the city being in this case, the Planning Commission. And the City Council said, we like the idea of a road, but. We would like to see, and we like the idea of a buffer, which was shown by the airport, but we would like to see the buffer be. Three hundred feet from the edge of the neighborhood. Let's create a park-like area or a park. That creates a proper transition. Um, and then have a two-lane road as a shared objective. So what you're gonna see in this map shows that. Um. It then, for the rest of the land, so everything that is. East of that, you know, future roadway. Um. What the. Um. Chamberlain Task Force from last summer. Um, said was that. This whole area should be the result, should be looked at holistically in a community-driven planning process. For all of the, you know, the balance of those forty-one acres in a community-driven process to figure out what does the community want for it. So that's what we have proposed in here. So you're gonna see now, I'm gonna bring this color back on. Um, the green here reflects. The, that, um, at least three hundred feet, in some cases more. The green tail here is the headwaters of the, um. Of the, uh. Centennial Brook, so we wanna show that more clearly. The green here represents the north side of Kirby Road. West of Airport Parkway, where some homes were removed. Um, Kirby cottages are right here. So showing that as green, as that's a clear intent, and then the remaining area that is this sort of. Now white color. Um, would. Essentially be the area for the robust community-driven conversation over the course of the next handful of years.
And where would the road go in relationship to the Centennial Woods? The new, the new proposed road.
So I'm gonna take the layers off here.
The strip between the green stream and the green buffer.
So, okay, so it'd be in that, in that white area? Okay.
Right, so the idea would be.
Centennial Woods is west of.
The Centennial's.
Yeah, you.
Brook.
Centennial Brook, oh, Brook.
I'm just drawing this like super, super sketchily here.
Yeah.
Oops. Oh, it is there, it's just, I did, I drew it as green.
And those thin.
I will change the symbol. Or make it red. Make it wider.
There's another factor in this besides the neighborhood, and that is that there are. Uh, self, uh, there are Burlington people. Who are councilors and former councilors. Who opposed to, uh, airport expansion. And they got, um, three hundred signatures, I think. Opposing any expansion of the airport when we had the task force. So there's that element in. So it's not all us wishing it's Burlington.
So the, the idea to answer your question, Laura, would be, um, it would. Start at the same place at Kirby Road. It would essentially follow Airport Parkway because we don't, we wouldn't wanna go into the brook. That doesn't make any sense. And then this, I drew it a little bit too far south, but it would, it would hang up a pretty tight.
That way, yeah.
Through the white, there are a few homes right here that we would wanna try and stay away from as much as possible. And then the natural place for this to follow would essentially be pretty close to the right-of-way for Dumont.
Yep.
Which is right here, if not following exactly. Um, there's a few folks who have chosen not to sell their homes, including one right here. One right here, and, um, you know, the intent would be, let's not show a roadway through their homes. They made the choice not to sell.
And the deli too.
There are also. Yeah, there are also a couple of homes over here. Those ones are in the seventy-five plus zone, which, um. The airport does not have, it, it must always offer to buy those homes out. At any time. So we, for planning purposes. Have assumed that at, somebody may choose to sell because it's in the highest. Noise level that it can't be insulated. The federal government won't support that.
And has the sixty-five decibel line moved, or is it the one that's still on here?
The current sixty-five is actually like here. That's the result of the, so, and, and, and. This, the, what that means is that everything from essentially this red line to out here. Those homes are eligible for insulation, so we've moved away. There is no buyout program, other than those handful of homes in the seventy-five zone. Everything else is, those are eligible potentially for insulated. So.
What's the green?
The green would be, uh.
The green, uh, the, is, is the green part of the white?
The green currently is white, yes. Oops, sorry.
Why is it green now?
Because that's our.
The buffer park area.
Um, for me, so it's showing that three hundred foot buffer. So we think that this reflects exactly what you have. Asked for over the years, which is the, uh, a, a still-to-be-had community conversation with a specific intent to have that. No predetermined. Um, uh, statement of this should go onto the airport, this should be a neighborhood, whatever it should be, that's. Leave that to be a specific intended action, and then. The areas to the, um, to the left, to, to the west and south of the. Of this, um, future relocated roadway to commit to that being green space. We have communicated this with the airport. And the airport is, um. Airport leadership is comfortable, um, with this as proposed, including the green space. If, we don't need, you don't need their permission, but we wanted to be in a dialogue with them, so we just wanted you to know that we've communicated with them and they. Are not opposed to any of this. Pardon me?
Definitely is okay with it.
We will continue to work with what the exact wording can be. Um, they are very interested in pursuing a project. Of a green buffer strip. Um, they are about to be in the next couple of months going out to the neighborhood to talk about designs for a trail to walk through it and possible community gardens and. Benches and things like that. They are looking at it as an amenity space. Whether they can technically call it a park. Is for the FAA to figure out, but they are looking at a, uh, a, a, a transition amenity green space.
And they give you headphones when you go to walk there.
Well.
So, but the white is primarily owned by Burlington. All of them.
Yeah, uh, other than the streets and the handful of homes. Uh, no, the city of South Burlington owns a parcel right here.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. But so the white is owned by Burlington, but they're okay with us deciding what to do with it.
Well, it's still our community.
We still zone it.
Right.
Well, and planet, let's say, it's not just about zoning.
And planet, they're a landowner like anyone else.
Okay.
Right.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's still South Burlington land. It has not been seeded.
It is not within the municipal boundaries of Burlington.
Right, they are the land of. Right, they are the landowner, not the jurisdiction, right?
Okay.
Right.
I thought I.
No, it's not.
They own our land.
Their beholder, their parcel.
Yes, okay.
Right, um, similarly, uh, the.
I hope they're paying big taxes.
There is a.
They're not, I'm sure they're not.
There is a tax arrangement. But yes, it's not, it's not totally unknown, unheard of. Uh, Brooklyn City owns some land in Clarendon. And Brooklyn Town, um, the city of Portland, Oregon owns a big green space. About twenty miles outside of town, that's like a big park that is owned by the city of Portland. So, yeah, they're, they're just, they're a landowner.
New York City is one of the largest landowners in the state of New York. And they own all the reservoirs.
Oh, like hashtags.
Yeah, um. So that's basically it. Um, the one thing that the airport asked us to have a conversation with you about. Is there's a tiny little piece of land right here. This blue line is the fence right here. Um, they are working to rejigger their plans to do as much as humanly possible. Um, on land that is owned by the, not owned, is within the fence. As opposed to any of the conversations that they were having last year that they heard loud and clear. They were interested in whether the city would be willing to. Essentially. Draw that as an area that could be re-designated as being fence line area. Get into the natural area over here, so it's just a little corner. But that makes for a very awkward transition for them. So they were interested in whether the city would be willing to. In the future land use, sort of straighten this line out. Um, this is. Uh, the former dog park was here. Um, that, that we have leased land on, so. Yeah, that's the one thing that they asked us to communicate with you. Um, to us, it makes logical sense, but this is your discussion, not ours.
Where's the house? The existing house?
It's not there. It's on Dumont, that's Kirby Road.
Parking there, all of that. Little corner?
There is a, oh, yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of um parking that takes place right here.
But like, maybe it shouldn't, it's kind of like a. I don't know, do we really think people should be driving over there and parking like in that airport note?
You're saying that that would be inside the fence line?
Right, they would like to relocate the fence line essentially to straighten this corner out. Um.
So that would no longer be. Oh, isn't that where they asked for the? Is that where they asked?
No, that's what my first thought.
Well, they asked it.
That's exactly what they asked you, you guys.
Well, they asked it, they asked it, they asked for this whole area here.
That's probably a tenth of what they.
Less than ten.
Less than a tenth of shit.
I mean, that looks.
So they asked about this whole area here.
Is this related to security? Cause I imagine they have cameras like along that entire fence, don't they? I mean, cause I mean, most airports have a highly secured fence around them.
I would say that um, they have not, the current airport director has not used the word of security specifically. I would say that they have indicated to us that. A roadway would not today ever be allowed to be located immediately adjacent to a fence. Um, that would not be a condition that would happen in a newly designed thing. It's just too many. Even with all the security lines, there's. But too much potential risk. So they didn't say that it's specifically about security, but I could imagine that they don't love that. Right up against, that there's a public roadway that goes right up against the fence there. But that's my words, not theirs.
Well, I think we should somehow talk to the neighborhood. I don't know what kinds of. I don't know, we'll talk to the neighborhood, the people that run the task force, maybe. We should, we should involve them in this discussion. And talk to them, tell them that we've had this discussion.
How would you? How would you suggest that we go about that conversation without implying that we're trying to sort of. Revisit the entire conversation, because I think the thing that we're trying to be really clear about, and if it's not coming across clearly is. This whole white area, we are recommending should be a robust, heavy, community-driven conversation.
Yeah.
Other than committing to some green, which hopefully everybody is supportive of, because that's creating buffers, and I can't imagine the folks in the neighborhood. Against.
They're really sensitive to the fact that the twenty sixteen. Uh, study that they did, didn't get into the last comprehensive plan. And so they will be really happy that this is now being considered in this comprehensive plan. So I think just, you know, involving them would be a natural thing to do. I really don't think that it would be a problem at all. And, you know, subsequent to the twenty sixteen. Uh, reported, you know, you have the uh.
Right.
Things, it's just, you know. They'll be delighted that it's in the comprehensive.
So just to be maybe like think through like how that conversation happens. Do you think it would be appropriate to like? Color that little triangle blue, so that it's just a straight shot, and you don't have that. Triangular nook out into the airway. And then have that be part of just. Um, did um, feedback where we would. Kind of show that to people who are on the committee to say, you know, this is what we're thinking for this area.
I wouldn't target it blue yet because they might think the decision's been made.
Make it a different color, make it a.
Something, yeah, but um.
Green or something.
My guess is that they probably not. They, they really are, you know. I think none of this is ever.
Couldn't they tend to say what can we get for it? I mean. Don't you, don't you get any sense of trading, you know?
They already lost two hundred houses, that's where it's.
I know, but what are they gonna get in return? Right now, they've got a green space that they really apparently like.
Was the airport.
With green space, so.
Green spaces.
I, I was just wondering, is it not gonna build something there?
It's just empty now.
I, I think it makes their operations a lot simpler because they have to, you know, right now they have to do this weird jog to get. Yeah.
Yeah, there's like a funny, chuggity, like the.
Uh, yeah.
I would definitely talk to them about that, but again, you know, it's. They're gonna be delighted that they're.
When you talk about the robust uh, conversation about what's gonna happen with this land. What kinds of things are, are. Being considered? Yeah.
Well, what, I think, new answer, what, what was incorporated into, what, in the, in the final vote of the task force?
Mm-hmm.
What did, what did that section entail?
Is that that area?
No, that, like, there were specific things. One of them was do a robust community conversation to blank, blank, blank. I think that's Laurie's question.
Yep.
Um, that doesn't seem to help them with the fence line because. Further, further. To the right, they're back to. I mean, that seems like making it more awkward.
I think it's really insulation.
Cause they're coming down, they're going up.
And turn, turn the, the um, blue back on, the future land use.
Yeah, and I may not, you know, I'm drawing this on the fly. It might be slightly, you know, evened out a little bit right there. Um. Cause on, on this parcel also, this is the one that's owned by the city of South Burlington. Um, so we own this piece and we've been clear that um, we don't imagine the city has any interest in re-designating any land that we own at this time.
The blue border that you put up.
Yeah.
Is ours. In your flash settings.
So this is the current, uh.
It's such a strange example.
Let me just see this, hang on. This is the current future land use map, showing it sort of going this zigzag.
Why not, why not continue that line straight to the next point?
Like this?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the next thing, though.
I think that, well, so that would take areas out of the blue. I think that we can certainly do it on the land that the city of South Burlington owns right here, and I don't imagine. When we talked to them, they thought a straight line made a lot of sense, so if we were to take this area out of the blue.
Make it a full straight line, yeah.
Right, so then if we put this to. Uh, here's what I would, here's what I would actually propose that we do then.
Where's your?
I would propose that we take the city of South Burlington land, which is like, I'm drawing this roughly, but. It's more or less like that. I would propose that we do that as green. Um, show an additional green area in there, and then cut this line like that to be part of the white. And then if you wanted to, you could, you know, present that as being, we're just straightening out lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems way better. I, and it also seems really weird for us to say into the future, we want our road to. Jump into the airport, like it feels like that's not really what we would. Usually. Want there.
Maybe if you propose to trade like.
So where's the new fence line now?
So the, I think that the idea would become, it becomes a straight line until you hit the city of South Burlington land, so instead of sort of zigging. And the fence line doesn't exactly follow this future land use, but it would be a intent to create a straight line, then you hit the natural resource land.
Yeah. So you mentioned that that's a, a, a headwaters of, of Centennial Brook.
Yeah.
So is it, is it wet?
Uh, the city of South Burlington land is basically the wetland. Yeah, that's why, that's historically why we own it.
And it's, it's like a gully, you know, right? It's deep, it's um, low, like. Like not just wet puddle, but like a. Vine, like.
Yeah. So the language from the um, airport resoning task force was um, was one of a few of a list of things, but it was further community-driven, driven planning. For all the land in the city of South Burlington owned by the city of Burlington as part of, related to, or in proximity to BIA is needed. Along with updates and revisions to the South Burlington Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the recommendations of the Chamberlain Neighborhood Land Use and Transportation Plan and subsequent work. So that is the intention of what we're talking about is. Identifying the need for the further community-driven planning. Um, and incorporating recommendations from the twenty sixteen. Work that was done immediately, at, well, at the same time and immediately after the previous plan. Um.
But no concept of what it might be used for.
No.
I think that was intentional, was um.
Open conversation.
There's been uh. You know, understandably, a lot of skepticism about um, who's got preconceived ideas about what should happen in an area, and so I think this was intentionally phrased as. Let's start with a blank canvas and have a true conversation about what the future should be.
Yeah, and in that task force, it was more in response to. The airport coming in and asking for rezoning for eleven of the acres. And not all, and not talking about the plans for all of the land. And the, the feeling was that that was a little bit piecemeal, and it was like, well, you want this bite, and then you're gonna want that bite, and then you're gonna want that bite. So it was identifying the need to plan for the whole area, which is what we're identifying as. Plan for the whole area, but also we're gonna pull some of it out and make the decision that it will be a green buffer strip. So it's reducing the question mark, but still keeping it open as one big. Area that will be dealt with as, as a whole.
We are.
What do you think about something along the lines of what we drew there?
Oh, yeah. I think there were a whole lot of nods when you did that. I think you were focused on your drawing. Seems good.
Well, I think, leads up the line.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I don't, I really don't think it's up to us to make the decision. I think we really have to talk to them. I think it should be okay, but.
Yeah, would that actually be a boundary line adjustment? To the city?
They own all the land. The Burlington, those, that's all Burlington, the Burlington land. It would be sort of adjusting what they're allowed to do and therefore where they're allowed to put their fence. So legally, probably not. They may want to change their lot lines, and that's sort of a merger. It's a different thing.
They may eventually move where the fence is.
Yeah.
Um, although, although, just to be a hundred percent clear on that, the city of South Burlington owns the road that's under here.
Mm-hmm.
So only with, through the, there's a. Fairly extensive state statute process for any action that the South Burlington City Council would ever do to permanently close a road. So it's not, the airport can't. Um, it would require hearings and justifications because it's, it's publicly owned, the stream is a publicly owned thing. So just to be clear, even doing that, they can't just put a fence up tomorrow. They put it on their side, but, and they could do it frankly today if they wanted. Our future land use district doesn't say where they can and can't have a fence.
Yes.
So, um. That's the tour, basically. Um, what I would love to do is to um, make this map. Available to you um, tomorrow so that you can. Um, we'll make it so that you can turn on and off the existing, the future. Um. Uh, we can make other layers available so that if you want to see some of the other stuff that's behind it, it's um. We've been working with the, our D I S consultant. Um, some of the stuff like this looks pretty good. Some of the other data looks a little. Less fancy, um, because we've been having to focus on the. Core things first, but um, we will make that available.
We need to sell us the old map too.
Yep, so what.
Looking at it on the data viewer, right?
Uh, we're gonna make a special data viewer for you to do this.
Oh.
Um, and what you'll be able to do is turn on and off the old, the new, uh, zoom in wherever you want. Um, we can make some other layers available, like the uh habitat blocks or so that you can turn them on and off. Yeah.
It's exactly what. I mean, to go back to, I don't have a problem with a fuzzy map, as long as, as long as we can get all these layers.
Yeah. I, I think that, that, you know, the key becomes um. The, the, the purpose of the future land use map is to be, what is the culminating policy decision that gets made overall? The, yeah. So.
That's fine, but the future land use of a habitat block is quite clearly defined. So knowing where the habitat block is in one of these layers is very helpful, uh, useful information.
It sounds super good. So it sounds like we have the tour, we got up the background, we're gonna get the data to look at, and then we'll have a future time together to. Kind of make comments.
Send you, well, yes, we'd love to get your um, group comments. We'd love to have you think about it. Um, we'll send you a couple of homework questions like. How would you want to depict something that looks like a conservation P U D? Maybe it's answered by having the layers underneath it. Um, we feel like we've hit this line between the orange and the yellow at scale fairly well, but you know, we wanna. Does it resonate with you about how these neighborhoods um, line up? Uh, we can make these sort of semi-transparent so you can look underneath.
Yeah, that's fair, I think for us to know where, where we are.
Awesome.
Then we can turn them on and off so we can see where we are and then pop them back on again.
Yep.
I like the addition of purple. Just another choice. Um, okay, so I think we're ready to move on to the policy priorities. We're a little behind schedule, but not too, too bad yet. Um, so in here, we had a table, graphic table. Um. Which was very nicely organized with our tasks alongside of other people's tasks and most of them are status.
Yes, so this is our first um, crack for you at what your. Um, what you would give to the council. So all committees and the council and departments are using the same format. To give one thing to council so they can look overall and set, you know, these are our big policy priorities. Um, many of these, as proposed, you are the lead on, but not all. Um, we tried to capture things that you would have some involvement with, so. Um, some of them are things like parks, uh, bike pad master plan that, you know, we're envisioning that you might. Um, be, have a discussion at the beginning of what your, your overall objectives. You might have a discussion somewhere in the middle, and at the end, you might have some resulting things to do. In your world, but the bike pad committee may be the lead on most of the work, for example.
Paul, you had mentioned that you, that infill conversation you were gonna.
So I have, we, to make it not confusing for folks, we didn't change anything from last week.
Oh, okay.
So if, maybe if you'd like to reiterate the thing that you wanted to incorporate. Um, I just didn't wanna.
Oh, okay, so you didn't make any changes.
No change from last week, yeah.
No, I, I had just mentioned about, I think we all agree it's important to have a conversation in fill. Yeah, R four. Everyone's like that.
Yeah, I missed that discussion, so.
The section about it, uh, adopted and sewer ordinance ordinance. And specifically to address the uh. S one hundred changes, is that correct?
Um, I would say that the impetus wa- for it was S one hundred and also it makes sense in the con. Even if S one hundred had not passed, it makes sense to align our infrastructure planning with our land use planning.
Yep.
So that's why this year. But it's probably good practice anyway.
Is the equity toolkit funded already?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so.
That was the um, municipal planning grant that we applied for this cycle. So that has to be. By mid twenty.
About a year from now.
Twenty four, yeah.
And. I wasn't here for that. What is the equity?
So we applied for and got a grant this past year to create a toolbox for how in the future you can do. Um, you and us can do public outreach related to planning projects in a more. Uh, incorporate more voices from uh, folks who've historically not been. Uh, participating in the planning process. So we're using the word equity, but we really mean. You know, it could be geographic, it can be age groups, it can be um, uh, uh. Folks who are renters versus owners, uh.
So it's an engagement tool.
Yeah.
Yep. It's an engagement toolbox with the intention that as up to now, we've made attempts to do some more equitable outreach. We've been reinventing the wheel every time.
Mm hmm.
Um, and we know by reinventing the wheel every time, we hit certain things and we miss other things. And so having a, a good framework. Um, would be as a place to start is, is something that would really help both the planning department in the future, but we're. Anticipating it can also be used by, on the city manager's side, the city council's side, wrecking parks, whoever. Um, and hopefully be a model for other municipalities as well.
Right, and be consistent and predictable in how we do it, so that we're not re, not creating it from scratch every time, but oh, how do we want to reach out?
Any changes? It sounded like Duncan, you were making a suggestion about infill.
Yeah, I think we would need to have the info conversation, we sort of kicked down the road a number of times.
Okay, um, was there a suggestion from last meeting about where it would go on here or?
Oh, you. I, I was thinking that it probably will go either incorporated, I probably would put it in the line right under uh, adopt amendments. To comply with S one hundred because it is somewhat in the same category. And it's about it being affordable and community strong. So I put it sort of right under there. There's no intended order to this other than um, the. Titles are the four titles of the, the four current vision statements to the comprehensive plan. And that's been given to us as, that's what all committees and the council are getting, but within it, I didn't. It was as they came up, if you have something that you'd like to show higher on that list, they were not in, intended to be a. In, in a specific order, but um. You're welcome to do that, or you're welcome to do that, um, you know, as you go, you know, in a, in a month's time after, two months' time after the council's done and they've. Revised it, you can. Or, or um, approved it, you can then prioritize if you want. We're not e- expecting that we will necessarily get every single one of these things done. Um, you know, a policy priority is. You know, it's, it's a little bit aspirational, but it is supposed to focus everybody's efforts that what are we trying to accomplish next year?
And it's not necessarily things that have to be finished, but things, some of them are things that we would like to start. You know, some of them are, are longer term processes or can be sort of attacked in bits and pieces.
And things might come off, so, so, something might be added in the next year and. Power of this is for us to come to you and say, okay, so this really great thing came up in the next year, what do you want to take off the list? Um, it does, it's not supposed to say you can't ever add, but it's supposed to help, you know, keep us focused on, okay, well then what thing are we not doing if we're adding another big thing?
And just as there's carryover from twenty three, there will probably be carryover from twenty four.
Yep.
The, the nature of planning work.
So.
Other than adopt twenty twenty four comprehensive plan, cause that's gotta be done by February second.
Being new on the commission. I don't have a lot of feedback on a lot of this because it's. This is what is already been, that you guys have been working on and. We're starting to get up the speed on.
I mean, it seemed to be the order in which presented it's. At least the first section. Under affordable and community strong seems. Reasonable. I would bring the. Climate action stuff further up.
Yeah, I, 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 I can remind that feedback again, that was the template that was given to us. I was just trying to follow it. I, I will say that. There doesn't look like there's a ton, ton under climate action plan. I think that that's just a reflection of. The work to be done is substantial, it just may not all be in the planning commissions. This is the planning commission's. Policy priorities, it's not necessarily the citywide ones. So I think when we draft up the. Department ones, there'll be a lot more in climate work.
Yeah, I mean, I'm more interested in where they are on implementation.
Yep. Where's the transportation plan right now? I mean, is there, there's a group consultants working on it, but. We haven't had any feedback at all on it.
Uh, we met with them this week, yes. Uh, we met with them this week and we are, um, they were a little bit. Um. Delayed in their work and we have um, sorted that out. So. Uh. Um, you'll be hearing from us, from us and them eventually.
Yeah, I was starting to wonder, it's like, ooh, we did go, just disappeared. It's not there.
Um.
Well, it is kind of, yeah.
It's under climate action in terms of um. Receive implementation plan, identify future council actions, complete transportation government operations sector implementation plans. So this week is when we're getting the proposals on the government operations. Those are due this week, so that will kick off pretty soon also.
But the uh, the S one hundred will affect. Future land use.
That's gonna be a big project. Um. Lots of it is spelled out, but lots of it is also work to be done, so. Um, other than the comprehensive plan, that and things related to it are probably some of the biggest things that you'll be working on this year.
Well, the piece about the water and sewer, I'm like, I'm amazed, has never been done before, and that's. You know, the allocations, you know, and just like. It seems like that's a, that's a very important piece of the, of the land development. That we need, you know, to know how much. Capacity you have for water and sewers.
Now it gets out of here.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, we can vote on this site, um, or we could push it out to our next meeting. But if it sounds like I'm only hearing one thing to add, which is about the infill. If that's true, I feel like we could maybe add it and then vote on it, so.
Just be. Okay with us, we'd be happy to get it in more than one day before the deadline, so.
Okay, I, that sounds exciting. Good. Yeah. Maybe do it with. On plan two. So, do we need to have a specific?
I would love to get a motion from you to uh, approve the um. Recommended policy priorities, um, as presented with the addition of a, an item to specifically. Um. Spend time looking at infill and existing neighborhoods.
That's version.
Yes, but I already made it.
Okay, and then. Blue second, blue second, and Duncan second in. Okay, any discussion about the motion?
And before you vote, you do have one member of the public.
Okay, any, any um, comments from the public on the motion?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Um, anything else? Okay, on paper. That was unanimous and very exciting. So, we can move on to the other business where we added um, a little discussion about outreach.
So, um, late, at the end of this month, you're gonna receive a. Complete draft of the comprehensive plan, and then we've got three to four meetings worth of time laid out for you to go through it. Um, we have two recommendations. One is that um, we would recommend that. If you're comfortable, that we release the draft to the public at that same time and say you've got. Four weeks, five weeks to six weeks to provide. Any feedback that you want so that they know that they won't be, that you won't be having new drafts every three days that they need to sort of say, oh, man, I shouldn't have read this version. That you, over the course of your two or three or four meetings, would be working on feedback, but that the next draft would. Um, reflect both. The um, your discussions, your opportunity to receive that feedback and then another draft out there. So that's one thing is to have a static period of time where the public can be expect what version of it is. That really worked well with the climate action plan last summer. The second piece that um. We would recommend is that you somewhere in the middle or end of that period of time host. Some specific sessions where you are um, soliciting feedback. And I think when you did the twenty sixteen plan, you divided yourselves into some smaller groups and did. A lunchtime one and then afternoon one and a couple of times for the public to just come in and. You know, um, you know, quick ten minute overview of the plan and then what do you have to tell us so that it's. So that your meeting time is reserved for you all to be pushing and pulling and debating and that the public has. Designated times where they know that they are the focus. And then if you wanted to have a. Evening commission meeting that's specifically about that before your public hearing, that you're being clear as to when is the. The public's chance to really have. Do the talking. So those are recommended.
How many pages will the first draft be?
I haven't compiled it yet. I will let you know.
Thirty, thirty-five?
Yeah, six.
You didn't say the font size.
The front page and the, the objectives for each section, then you're done.
Yeah.
Six.
One map.
I like that.
But we had a charter committee, our public hearing here last week, that was phenomenally attended. I was shocked. Um, this room was full, people were outside the door. And it was all of the movers and shakers in South Burlington, the opinion leaders. And those are the people you wanna get, that was, you know, Sandy Dooley, uh. You know. Ellen Weely, everybody, you know. So, um, I think if you target that group, maybe with special invitations. Or have some kind of meeting for them, and really build a room for them. And the discussion, of course, was excellent because they were all really important people.
I think an- another piece of Paul was that it was announced well in advance so that people could. Put it on the calendar, it wasn't, and it wa- it was known as to, you know, what day? Is it as opposed to come to a meeting, you know, it was come to this meeting?
Well, we had one before that. There were two of them. It was one, I think, on the eleventh. And that was fully attended in the auditorium, you know, and uh, you know, there was just a handful of average citizens.
I suspect it's because one had, one had more time. It was, it was more time for people to have heard about it and for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever happened that turned that crowd out, I mean. That's the crowd you wanna turn out.
Yeah, cause because what we're looking for in July and August is a balance between um, further public comment and input. And also having enough time for the commission to discuss amongst themselves, cause what we don't want is for every meeting to. You know, every section, every point in the, in the plan be a discussion amongst the commission and then twenty minutes of public comment. And then some discussion and twenty minutes of public comment, cause it won't, we won't be able to get through it in the number of meetings that we have, so. It's not separating the two things, but it's sort of is designating, here are speci- here's your specific. Method for commenting.
It's also valuing their time so that they know when they can speak as opposed to, oh, you might hit nine forty-five at night, spread, tune in at seven, you know, it's.
Is there also written comment?
Oh, yeah.
Is.
So that's, that's the idea of when we release the first draft, if you're comfortable, we would do some. Outreach to say, this is the draft, we welcome your feedback over the next. You know, until X date, four weeks, five weeks in the future, so people can plan out their schedules. We know it's the summer, it's not ideal, but it is what it is. Um, and then we would, as we did with the climate action plan, we would record all those comments. We would, um, I think when we did it in twenty sixteen, we tried to categorize the comments. For you so that they were somewhat discernible, you know, are they about natural resources, then they about transportation, cause if you just get. You know, four, three hundred comments that are all over the place, they're impossible to beat. So that would be our suggestion.
First draft.
The complete draft, the goal is June twenty, the June twenty seventh meeting would be the first meeting that you have it in the packet.
And that's what, that's the one that you're talking about.
So we would, when we give it to you, it's public, we would say it's also available to everybody else. We would make it very clear that it is a first draft and the public is seeing it at the same time you're seeing it.
So that's also the first time we're gonna see the introduction.
Yes.
So. I would vote that we do it in our meeting after that.
So have a meeting to review and then.
I think, I think that I would like to see the introductory page, have us be able to discuss it. Talk about whether it's reflecting what.
Mm hmm.
We really want and then put it out to the public because.
That makes sense.
That's a, to me, that's a key piece.
Yep, those are your words, so, uh, even if it's in draft form, I can totally understand that you would want to.
I wanna see that before we put it out.
Just for total, you know, process transparency, everything that is sent out in a packet is available to the public. But I, the idea of the first, it would so would be for, for the first meeting in July. That the draft that you receive in the packet for that meeting would be the static draft that doesn't get cha- updated every meeting. It would be updated.
Right, and it'll be the draft upon which, you know, we'll put it out in city news, we'll put it on the other paper, go to this lane, this is the one, that makes total sense.
Yeah.
And I totally know that anybody has access to everything we have.
City of South Burlington is actively seeking nickel smelting across all neighborhoods. The opening paragraph.
Exactly. Paul, um, I'm related to anything that's on the agenda here of the business. Why was, uh, why did the city or what objections did the city attorney have to? Land use regulations as opposed to land development regulations?
Do you recall? Some of it was a um, a, a matter of it's cross-referenced in all sorts of ordinances.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a little bit of a consistency thing, so it means updating a whole bunch of ordinances.
Which is not as simple as swapping the terms. It's a lot, it's the same re-adoption process across and other ordinances or city council ordinances, some are. Um. There are also other. Legal and planning documents that refer to them. It's not as simple as three or four um, ordinance documents. It's, it's quite a few. Um, I think that was the primary. Issue is that it, there is some potential for. Ambiguity and cross-referencing, like do you mean the same document or do you not, um?
You like stipulate that at the beginning by saying this document prior to this date was. Called this and.
I think in the language, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, you know this, every legal office does this. They go through. Uh, they go through all the documents and are, ask the software to tell you where does. Land, where, where land development regulations appear. And. Then you have to, uh, you have to change them.
As you find and replace.
And.
Right, well, and, and because it's in a bunch of legally adopted documents, it's probably a. You know, five, five to ten year process to bring every ordinance. Cause they all have to hold public hearings, they all have to amend them, you know, it's, it's a big, we just. About five years ago, when codified a bunch of them by doing that process, so it's not that it's not a doable thing, but just to be aware, it's, it's a.
It's a huge.
We haven't looked through everything in particular, but I imagine they're also referred to in other like contractual documents and property documents, that's also very possible. Um, I don't know that for sure, but it may be even broader than what you're saying.
And I think, you know, as, as a secondary issue and again, I, I. I'm not the city attorney, but I'm also gonna say that the city attorney isn't the final arbiter of this question. Um. The other thing that they raised was that the um. Land development is a defined term in the regulations and that is the thing that is subject to permits. Which includes changes of use and various different things. So as a matter of. Not necessarily public perception, but strict accuracy, it is the regulations about the thing defined as being land development.
Well, I, I guess I made a tactical error in, in giving the public. The expectation that we were gonna change it. And I think.
Well, I'm not saying.
Came to us with the knowledge that other towns like Sheldon. Already use the term. But if it's, if it's, if it's gonna be a five to ten year project.
That's gonna consume.
I would make a motion to scrap, scrub it. But we have public input.
Yeah, so, so you asked me, I didn't, I have not had an updated conversation with the city attorney following last. Yeah, so so you asked me, I didn't, I have not had an updated conversation with the city attorney following last week. You did ask me to come back to you. I will, I think I said I'd do it in the next two meetings. I did not have a chance because I was on vacation this past week, but. Thank you.
Okay, so we're adjourned.
And Paul, I have something for you to have a look at.
I always appreciate things to.
Outside of the meeting?
Yeah, it's just it's the new one.
Thanks, so.